Five thirty. Okay, would you all stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think you may be seated. We have roll call.
Chairperson Peter O'Brien is absent. Co-chairperson Amy Fernandez.
I'm present.
Planning Commissioner Anne Olent.
Present.
Planning Commissioner Brian Devlin.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't believe we have any special presentations or announcements, so we'll move on to public comments. And this time is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda, as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under the public hearing, old or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate speaker. Please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments. Please address the commissioners as a whole. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your comment, your remarks to three minutes. Since council is unable to take action on in, on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff for follow-up or be placed on a future agenda. Do we have anyone here for public comment? Okay, so we'll move on to consent agenda. So, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be connected by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. We have two items on the consent, consent agenda. The approval of minutes of the regular meeting held April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the approval of the minutes of the adjourned lack of Brown Act quorum meeting from July nineteenth. Do we have any public comments? Do we have a motion?
Sure. Yeah.
No, I need correction.
I motion that we adopt a consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now we have the public hearing, which was continued from July nineteenth, and that is titled twenty twenty-two dash five-two Evans Family Tentative Parcel Map. The planning commission will consider the following tentative parcel map application filed by Evans Family Construction, Family Properties LLC for assessors parcel numbers zero six one three zero one zero one zero, zero six one three zero one zero six zero, and zero six one three zero one two four zero within the city of Wairega. The proposed tentative parcel map would subdivide one ninety-nine point one zero acre parcel into two separate parcels, one forty-three point two eight part, two eight acre parcel and one fifty-five point eight two acre parcel.
All right, thank you.
I believe we do have a correction that the planning director is going to point out.
Oh, that'll be for the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. There's a six A, or six A and six or seven A and a six or seven B.
Okay.
Um, this one's actually very straightforward, so thank you very much. Uh, so we did, as you said, receive an application from the Evans Family Properties LLC for these parcels. We do have the surveyor available here for any specific questions you may have. There is no proposed development with this project. And so what this is, it's kind of a fun one. It's kind of cleaning up the chain of title that's occurred on this property. So you'll notice there are three parcel numbers discussed, but one parcel, uh, that's ninety-nine point one zero acres, but then it shows kind of two parcels as well. So we have conflicting documentation, uh, on the split merger and ownership of the property itself. And so what we're trying to do today is clean up that chain of title to make sure that it's accurate and so that the county and the city records match. And so that if there are sales or any other type of parcel splits or mergers in the future, that we start with kind of a fresh slate. The current property is Zoned R-one Single Family Residential in the northeast section of the property. And in the southwest section, it is M-one Light Industrial, and it has a general plan land use designation of low-density residential in that northeast section and industrial in the southwest section of the property. Uh, there is no proposed changes to the current zoning or land use designation, so it would really just be clearing up the chain of title with this, um, to make sure that it is clear and correct for future applications if they so choose to bring them forward. So then I would recommend, uh, at this time that you would invite the applicant up if they would like to make a statement, and then we can open the public hearing and people can give their public hearing. Um, and, uh, we can then move from there and I'll guide you through that.
Okay, can I have the applicant's name so I don't have to go fishing for it?
Uh, so we have Dan Wallace as the surveyor of record is here today. The applicant is, um, oh, he's gonna kill me for Evan's.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's the LLC.
Right.
The, uh, so Dan's available if he has, if you have any specific questions for him.
I don't have any questions. It was pretty straightforward, like you said. Okay. Okay, well, why don't we open it up for public comment, public hearing, and see, um, if there are any questions that need to be addressed? Anybody here to ask questions about?
Or give comment.
Or give comment? No? Okay, well, we don't have any questions for you.
So close the public.
Close the public hearing.
And then you can discuss among yourselves on how you would like to move forward. There is a proposed motion on your agendas on page two. Or there is also the same, uh, proposed motion is on page ten of your packets.
Well, I don't have any discussion items and I would, um, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three oh four, recommending the approval of the proposed tentative parcel map.
And the adoption of the class.
And and adopting a class one five exemption from California Environmental Quality Act. See.
Okay, I would second that. Right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion carried, right?
Yep, okay. And so, uh, just for the edification of the public, the, this item will be placed on the September nineteenth city council meeting for city council confirmation. So, thank you.
All right. Okay, moving right along to six B, which is titled twenty twenty-one four five Wairega Travel Center and Hotel Development Final Environmental Impact Report. Uh, the planning commission will hold a public hearing and consider adoption of the final environmental impact report for the proposed Wairega Travel Center and Hotel Development. This item will only consider the environmental review of the proposed project. A second public hearing, that's incorrect.
Uh, yeah, this is the portion that'll be corrected.
Okay.
Yeah.
A second public hearing for the proposed amendment to the PUD five nine eight is scheduled for a special planning commission meeting.
So it'll be a regular planning commission meeting September twentieth.
Beginning at?
Either five thirty or six o'clock, depending on how you guys change your schedule later in this evening.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for that. I apologize for the, uh, update.
Okay, is, um, the, do we need to invite the applicant up to provide any kind of comment?
So yeah, so I can, I'll give the staff report and then we do also have Mike Martin from Ecore available, which is the city's environmental consultant for this project, and he can address any specific environmental questions that you have on the analysis or recommendations for tonight. So just to go through a summary of the project, the city of Wairega received an application number twenty twenty-one dash forty-five from Four North Wairega LLC for an amendment to the planned unit development permit five dash nine eight and associated use permit number twenty-eight eighty-three for assessor parcel number zero five three six four two three five zero, zero five three six four two three six zero, zero five three six four three seven zero, and zero five three six four two three eight zero within the city of Wairega. The application proposes two phases, which were analyzed in the environmental documents here and referred to as the project. So there are two phases, and this is beginning on page thirty-five of your agenda packets. So there are two phases to the proposed project. Phase one is a twelve thousand three hundred square foot building consisting of a convenience store, food hall, and retail shop, open seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, a fueling center with eight dispensers for automobiles and RVs, a separate fueling center for four diesel dispensers for semi-truck trailers, and a ninety-nine space parking lot. Phase two of the project is a proposed seventy-room three-story hotel and parking that would service that hotel. So the, the purpose of tonight is just to review the environmental documentation, which has been prepared over the last two years or year and a half, uh, for the project itself. Um, if you'll remember, we did do a SEQA training on environmental impact reports a couple months ago in preparation for this discussion and public hearing. And so tonight, the purpose of this is to review the environmental documentation and make the findings that we did a good faith effort in determining any impacts to the environment that could occur from the, the proposed project and that, uh, we, uh, provided mitigations to anything that may be above, uh, a significant level of impact to the environment. And, uh, Mr. Martin can jump in at any time for that, but I'll just kind of go over the, the gist of the documentation. So the proposed project is considered a project on, that is, uh, required to prepare environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA throughout tonight. So as such, we prepared an initial study to do a pre-analysis to eliminate any areas that have any less than significant or no impact areas to the environment, and that initial study was released with our notice of preparation for the environmental report back in July of twenty twenty-two. So when you go through the environmental document, uh, we really focused on the items that we suspected were going to have a significant impact to the environment and made me, may, may need additional analysis and mitigation. So that's why you'll see only pieces of what we typically cover in an environmental document in the environmental impact report and some of them in the initial study. And so again, like I said, that was posted with the notice of preparation for comments from the public at that point, um, and as part of our analysis, and so we moved into a focus environmental impact report, um, specifically on, uh, transportation. Excuse me. There's about five hundred pages of things that I have to go through, so pardon me if I'm skipping around a little bit. So, uh, the environmental impact report, uh, did an in-depth analysis on the biological resources, cultural resources, geology soils and paleontological resources, transportation and tribal cultural resources. And, uh, I will kind of hand it off to Mike Martin if you want to kind of run through the analysis and the findings. Uh, one of the big concerns that we had at the beginning of the project was transportation, and so we spent a significant amount of time on the analysis and the appropriate recommended, um, mitigations for transportation. Um, but as you'll see from the other analyses, we did also do the in-depth biological resources report and cultural resources report for the environmental impact report. So I'll hand it off to you, Mike, if you want to take off. And you're muted. Nope, can't hear you.
Open mic now.
I think, uh, it's on the audio on your side, Mike, if you want to go in and take a look at which microphone is live for your Zoom. Yeah. So while Mike's getting his, uh, microphone up, I'll just kind of continue some just general stuff. So the final EIR that we're presenting to you tonight did go through a public review process. Um, our timeline for events is that a notice of preparation was issued July sixth, twenty twenty-two through August eighteenth. And so what that notice of preparation is, is it notifies any responsible agencies, which is like California Department of Fish and Wildlife, our tribal partners, as well as any interested members of the public who have interest in this project. And so that notice of preparation was sent out, and then we held a public meeting, um, with video conferencing on August fifteenth. But as you'll remember, last year, uh, we did not have very many people attend that meeting because we had the McKinney fire outbreak, and so we decided to hold a second meeting on, uh, extended through August eighteenth. Uh, in that time, we received four notice of preparation comment letters, which were summarized in table one point zero dash three in the draft environmental impact report and included in the appendix of the draft environmental impact report, and they were considered as part of the analysis. And during that portion, um, the comments we got were primarily from, uh, state agencies for that, uh, notice of preparation timeframe. So the draft environmental impact report was prepared and released for comment from March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, through May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And so this is the portion of the environmental impact report that you all received, uh, an electronic, and I offered, uh, some paper copies to people who wanted to go through and look at that. And it contained a description of the project, description of the environmental setting, identification of project impacts and mitigation measures for impacts found to be significant, as well as an analysis of project alternatives. Um, and one of the questions that was brought up to me was about those project alternatives and the purpose of those. And so SEQA, we take a look at different scenarios within the environmental impact report. One is a no project, which creates a baseline. Um, there's the project itself, and then there's a scenario of a slightly reduced project, just to take a look at the findings, um, to see which one is environmentally superior. And so, uh, going through that process, we analyzed all three of those alternatives and had those open for comment as well. So after that, uh, so the, the draft EIR was provided to interested public agencies. The public was made available for review during that timeframe at City Hall and on the city's website, as, as well as special notification that was requested. And then we released a final environmental impact report on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. The city received two comment letters from interested groups, government agencies, and the public regarding the draft EIR. This document responds to the written comments received as required by SEQA. So the two letters that are in the final EIR from two state agencies with their comments regarding our analysis or any additional number, uh, items that they'd like to see, as explained in section three point oh of the final environmental impact report, minor revisions. One of these comments resulted in a minor revision to the mitigation measure bio dash one in order to provide more specificity regarding the mitigation procedure in this document, um, overall constitutes that final EIR. A subsequent letter was received outside of the public comment period that was not responded to in the final EIR, but made available to planning commission through email, um, last month, as well as, I believe I printed a copy for you. And then, um, basically what's being requested tonight is the review and consideration of the final environmental impact report, the opening of the public hearing for members of the public to make comments. And if the city finds that the EIR is adequate and complete, the city may certify the final environmental impact report. This is a really important process because if you feel that the document is not substantial enough in addressing those points, um, we would not recommend, uh, certification today, and we would not move forward with any project denials or approval until the document is certified and, um, up to your standard. Uh, making sure that it shows the good faith effort at a regular full disclosure of environmental information and providing sufficient analysis to allow decisions to be made regarding the project in contemplation to its environmental consequences. And so that information is on page thirty-nine of your packets. Mike, did we get your work in?
Mike, you're still muted if you want to unmute.
Reda, is there any way we might be able to validate that, uh, any of, any of the guests can speak?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you.
Mike, if you can unmute on your, um, PC.
Let's see, he might, he might call in as well.
I think that tends to be a little easier.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Jared, is there anything you would like to add in terms of the report, since you are available?
Thank you. No, I, I think you've covered it, uh, quite well. I do, uh, I will note that it just appears that, um, Mike has dropped off my screen. Um, so he might be trying to call back in. Um, I, I think you've covered it well. Um, and the only thing I would underscore here is that, uh, the only thing being decided tonight is the environmental determination component. Um, and we just want to focus the discussion and the decisions on that versus the decisions that would be, be made on the project as a whole at a later date.
Thank you. Mike, how about we give you another shot? Go for it. No. Do you want to try calling in and using the phone audio, Mike?
What's?
Yeah. Do you have any specific questions for me at this time? Otherwise, we could take, uh, public hearing comment on this if you would like.
I do not have any questions. I read the, the public comment letters, the letters that we received from the state agencies. Um, is, is anybody here to, I guess I should open the public hearing and see if anyone is here to, um, make a comment or have questions regarding this issue.
And then we'll have three minutes for each commenter.
Please come on up to the podium.
Okay.
You can do it. And state your name, please.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Darren Mercier. I think I've met most of you, and I appreciate your time tonight and your dedication as commissioners, and thank you to city staff for the opportunity to comment. Um, I represent, uh, several of the owners of the remaining parcels in the PUD, specifically the Wairega Truck Stop, and, uh, we have Leslie Pratt here tonight to represent the truck stop, uh, the Holiday Inn Express, uh, we have Monica Mendoza and Lowell Pratt here representing Holiday Inn Express, A-one Investments LLC, um, Mon Dylan is, is here representing that entity. And, uh, certainly our primary concern will be focused at the next hearing concerning the potential amendments of the PUD and the CUP, which we object to, um, you know, the, the, uh, this PUD was adopted, I believe, in nineteen ninety-eight, so it's been around for something like twenty-five years. And these landowners have invested in that property, have developed that property in reliance on the terms of that PUD, that the PUD designer designed that so that each lot would have symbiotic uses, but not competitive uses. And now that these lots are developed and my clients have spent literally millions of dollars in developing that, the final lot to be developed wants to change the PUD and put in a competing use that's rather than, rather than symbiotic, uh, is the opposite. And that really goes against the purpose of a PUD and that, uh, it provides an opportunity.
Mike Martin.
Join the meeting.
Trying to get my glasses out of here because I'm now to that age where my, uh, arms have out, or my eyes are not good enough for the length of my arms any longer. So one of the primary purposes of a PUD is to control development in a responsible manner, protecting the remaining interests within the PUD in addition to public health, safety, and the environment in general. And this proposed project is for the last lot in the PUB to be developed, and the PUD limits that lot to quick service slash full-service restaurants. No other uses are authorized by the PUD or the CUP. And again, my clients for the hotel relied on that being the only hotel site. Put it there. They recognized the freeway would be on one side and create noise and lights, but that, yes, who were sensitive that could stay on the other side of the hotel. Now, the proposed project is to put big rig parking right up against that side to have a twenty-four-seven, um, lights and noise from that facility. And in phase two, to build a three-story building that would literally block my client's hotel and visibility and take about my three minutes already. Well, thank you. All right, I think my clients have some sort of points that they'll want to make independently.
My name is Leslie Pratt, and I'm the general manager of the truck stop there. And my concern is about the transportation. The roadway there, I've, we've been there three years, allows really for only one-way access for those big rigs coming in off of, um, Highway three, Montague Road. They have to turn. I suppose they could if they did, but most of them turn in and take up three-quarters of the roadway coming in. And then those trucks leaving our parking area and the fueling area, when they come up, come out, they have to take the whole, they're into the other lane, the whole lane in order to get out onto the roadway there. So fortunately, there's not a lot of traffic there, and people are, um, respectful of that, um, and hold back and give right of way to those trucks as they go in and out. But I just, environmentally, if there's any more big rigs coming off of the other side, it, it will be impossible. That's my comments.
Good evening. My name's Lowell Pratt. I'm the general manager of the Holiday Inn Express. I live at twelve thirteen, uh, North Ridge Drive. Similar concerns to Leslie. I'm not as concerned as much with what's in the environmental impact study as what's not. And I see talks of bugs and frogs and plants and flowers, but nothing is, it relates to the environmental impact of people that are there. And I'm referring to our guests that are there, and I'm referring to the employees that are there. In preparing for this, I've interviewed all of our employees, and not one of them has, has had, has not had an experience of almost being ran over by trucks coming out of that road because it's designed to be just a single lane, and they take the whole lane and they don't look towards the hotel side. I've been near here about three times. Some of my employees been ran all the way off the curb because of this. There's just not room for more trucks coming. I'm also concerned that in the, in the synopsis that she read, it indicates that there's ninety-some odd parking spots. But when the hotel comes in, seventy-two of those goes to the hotel parking. So as a truck stop, I'm curious where those people are going to park unless on the sides of the roads again. There are times in the winter that people park on both sides of the road, and then another truck comes and tries to get inside, and my employees have taken an hour to get from the stoplight on Montague to get to the hotel. And conversely, my guests can't leave because of that bottle jam. So where are those trucks going to park? And then it brings up another point, are they going to park in the existing truck stops? Or make money on the revenue of the trucks and then have them park at the other truck stop? That doesn't seem appropriate or fair. So those are some of my concerns. If the, if the parking is there, the lights are going to glare into my windows, the noise is going to be an issue. To me, it's a huge impact on the people that's not addressing environmental study. That concerns me. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Monica Mendoza, and I'm with the DRD Hospitality. DRD Hospitality started its relationship with the city of Wairega in two thousand and two when we purchased the already existing Baymont Inn. Our general manager at the time, Sandra Palmer, told us about a development coming that would have an RV park, hotel, gas station, and restaurant. The Wairega Travel Plaza was carefully planned and developed the hillside in the best way for all of the tenants. We, when we looked at the development, that was under protection of PUD. We were happy to reinvest in the city of Wairega, so we built a sixty-eight unit hotel in two thousand and eight. In twenty twenty, part three trucks, the truck stop was built. An additional twenty-four-hour gas station with big rig diesel gas accommodation is not agreed upon development. An additional 24-hour gas station with big rig diesel gas accommodation is not the agreed upon development plan, nor is additional hotel. These types of additions would bring them, would bring considerable traffic to the area. That would change the landscape, not only for our guests, but the residents of the RV park, as well as the families who walk and ride their scooters to the restaurant and convenience store. We are asking that you reject the environmental impact study based on the unsafe traffic problems that are proposed by these suggested companies.
Good evening. My name is Amon Dillon and I'm representing the A1 Investments LLC. The EIR asserts that acute risk associated with the project is a result of fueling operations only. This parcel was dedicated to a restaurant, not a fueling station. So the allowance of this project would allow a non-conforming use under the PUD that creates an acute health risk to the patrons of the hotel, RV park and the future development of the A1 LLC's lot. EIR asserts nearest sensitive land use receptor is an off-site, single-family residence. Doesn't account for the impact to the businesses within the PUD. Pursuant to Wairega ordinance 16.60.070D5, a conditional use permit for a planned unit development cannot be granted without a finding that the development will not generate more traffic than the streets in this vicinity can carry without congestion and will not overload the utilities. The road on the A1 Investments property, which is a spur road, was not designated for more truck, truck stop traffic. Therefore, the modification to CUP should not be granted. Further, it does not bear that EIR addresses the impacts of the project to the road and the surrounding businesses. The Planning Commission cannot grant the application if it will be materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. Wairega City Court 16.60.070D2, the application seeks to develop a competing rather than a complementary use as initially designed and approved in the PUD. Given the property change of development would injure rather than complement the property, the owners who developed and remaining parcel in the PUD, the Planning Commission cannot make the required finding that the developed, development will complement each and will harmonize with existing and proposed land uses in the vicinity. Wairega Code 16.60.060 states no use shall be permitted, which is found by the Planning, Planning Commission to be reasonably objectionable to the persons residing or working in the vicinity or injurious to the property located in the vicinity by reason of odor, fumes, dust, smoke, cinders, dirt, refuse, water carried waste, noise, vibration, illuminations, glare, unsightliness, vehicle traffic or involve any hazard of fire or explosion. The persons and entities who purchase the properties in the PUD in reliance on the PUD and the CUP object to the project for all of these reasons. Thank you for hearing.
Anybody want online? Would anyone online like to speak? You're allowed to unmute.
Hello, my name is Steve Wakeman. I'm the architect of record for the development of representing the clients. And I'd just like to briefly thank the commissioners and the the City of Wairega for this consideration. The, over the last five years of this planning and the extensive environmental review done by the, of the agency, responsible agency, the Wairega Planning Department of Wairega and ES2 Corp. They did extensive study. And just briefly, all of those issues that were just commented on and from an environmental review comment were extensively studied. And if you read those reports, I know it's very challenging sometimes to read some of these environmental reports. But all of those issues were studied extensively and as the report came to a conclusion, there's the adequate and complete, there's insignificant impact on the environment. And so I just want to just emphasize that one of the other comments that this is a fueling only, it's not a truck stop. And that was one of the mitigating factors that the the investors of this development made accommodation for, reduced the size of the hotel and from an environmental impact. And also it is only a fueling only. So I appreciate the consideration of the commission and thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Is there anyone else online that'd like to make a comment?
Hi, my name is Deep Greywall and I am one of the partners in this project. I am involved in this project since 2018 when we started this. So you can figure it out. It's about five years now that we are still working on it. As Steve mentioned, we have kind of addressed all the issues that were concerned with the traffic and all the issues that they came up with has been addressed. And you know, from time to time, we had a truck stop, we eliminated that. At that time, there was no hotel, we eliminated that kind of thing. The, 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 the issue about trucks going in there, we addressed that because now the trucks are not going to that hotel lane. We stopped the truck stop from, it's on near truck fueling station. And so, you know, all the five people pretty much who spoke, you know, are the same people, you know, because they are all the same company and they all own, it's all the businesses are owned by the same person and they're different corporations. So I think they had been, you know, addressing this issue since we started, you know. And then when we started the project, the truck stop they are running was not even there. We started the proposal before that truck stop was built. And we bought the property before they bought the property. So now because, you know, so my only thing is we addressed all the concerns and issues that has been going since 2018. And I will really appreciate if, if the commissions can go ahead and, you know, approve this so we can take the next steps because, you know, America is built on small businesses and we live in the world that, you know, we all want to grow and and competition is part of it. So, you know, I really appreciate if you can keep into the consideration that the time and the effort and and all the concerns that we have addressed with the city and the people and whatever we got feedback. So I just wanted to thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. All right. If you want, you can close the public hearing for the environmental, the final environmental impact report. And then we just request that we take a quick recess.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and we will recess for five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay. Thank you. And if anyone needs to use the restroom, we'll open up the building.
Madam Chair.
So if you'd like to call us back to order. All right. We, I'm calling the, the meeting back to order at 6:13 PM. I was just going to run through a couple of the points that we heard and then invite Mike to talk about the traffic analysis. So Mike, did we get your work any? I think it's star six to unmute or star nine.
Are you there?
Hey, there we go. Hey, Mike.
You know, sorry about that. I've actually changed computer. So hopefully it'll be coming up here in a second.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm going to go through a couple of points, give you a sec, and then I'll hand over to, for you to talk about traffic and transportation. So I wanted to start with, we did analyze lighting within the environment, within the initial study that we did as prep work for the environmental impact report. And that was on page four dash three of the initial study that was released back in July 2022 for public comment. We found that the project would have a less than significant impact on creating a new source of substantial light or glare, which would adversely affect day or nighttime views of the area. And so the project itself has to adhere to Wairega Municipal Code Chapter 13.10 General Standards, which requires all electric signs and outdoor lighting in Wairega to comply with Article 600 of the current edition of the California Building Code. Therefore, all new lighting of the project will be required to be fully shielded and directed downwards so as not to allow any light to penetrate off-site. All new structures would be painted in a manner that precludes bare minimal, bare metal surfaces, a potential source of glare. The roofs would be constructed of a non-reflective material. The proposed windows are scattered and no single large bank of windows is included. This design would reduce the potential for window glare. The proposed project would be required to comply with the different development regulation guidelines mandated under the City Municipal Code Section 16.46.060 Outdoor Lighting, which requires again, all outdoor lighting be designed to prevent unreasonable glare to adjoining properties and controlled by such reasonable means as are practical to prevent sky reflected glare. Chapter 13.10 and Section 16.46.060 would ensure that the proposed project would be constructed consistent to the City of Wairega standards in preventing substantial glare and light. Therefore, we found that this item is less than significant based off of the application of those regulations. In addressing the parking issue, we did actually go through and address the parking. There is parking proposed with the Phase One and Phase Two, and that parking is prescribed in our off-street parking requirements and found that it was to meet the needs of the hotel and the proposed travel center for both parking for any semis that are using the food services, but there is not substantial parking that meets the truck stop standard. So again, it is a travel center and not a truck stop. So we did provide ample parking based on that regulation. And so I'll hand it over to Mike to talk about transportation and traffic. We did spend a lot of time on this issue because it is a traffic generator and it is primarily a commercial highway area that has a lot of contiguous uses with commercial highway. And so we did spend a significant amount of our analysis in the environmental impact report on traffic. So, Mike?
Hello, everyone. I'm, I come, I come up as Holly Keeler on this in case I haven't figured that out yet. It's now Mike Martin on, on a different computer and for some reason the video not worked on this one. But anyway, as far as the traffic concern, there were concerns from Caltrans about the on and off ramps on I-5 off of the, off of Montague Road there.
Mike, Mike, this is the city manager. Do you mind just whatever your microphone setup is? Can you just speak as close to that as possible? It's a little bit difficult to make out what you're saying.
Sure. As I said before, I'm, I'm coming up as, as Holly Keeler on the screen, not Mike Martin. This is my wife's computer and for some reason, video not working on this one. But anyway, can you hear me now?
It sounds like you're in a fishbowl.
Oh, my God. How about, how about now?
It's still pretty muffled. You're pretty clear on the phone.
Well, I'll try calling you back and doing it that way. Anyway.
Everybody on Zoom can hear you really well, though. While he's doing that, I'll at least get us through the introduction of the traffic analysis that was conducted by GHD. We brought them on as a sub consultant. GHD is known for putting together substantial evidence and analysis for sequoia purposes. And so we did take a look at the proposed travel center and hotel development. So included in the technical memo, which was an appendancy to the draft environmental impact report and made available at the same time as the draft environmental impact report, included a technical analysis on the intersection and operations of roads based off of a number of scenarios, which is an existing no project baseline, existing plus project phase one cumulative project or cumulative no project, which is again a baseline measurement. And then cumulative plus project phase one and cumulative, cumulative plus project phase two. Relative, we basically mean.
Join the meeting.
But also any neighboring surrounding projects, because again, we have to take a look at those cumulative impacts to know what the full picture of any environmental impacts would be. And so you'll see two different types of analyses within the traffic analysis. One is what we can, what's called a level of service or LOS rating, which takes in congestion as well as traffic patterns. That's not the typical accepted practice by the state of California anymore, which is why we did that analysis in addition to vehicle miles traveled, which is VMT evaluation as well. Level of service gives us an idea on commercial operations and congestion of different types of vehicles for streets and intersections. And so that's why we provided both of those analyses. Although the State of California Senate Bill 743 prioritizes vehicle miles traveled rather than level of service. And so because the concern is traffic and transportation based, so we quantify traffic operations as that level of service and give it a grade of A through F. A is completely clear roads. F is completely gridlocked and you cannot move. And so we take a look at the baseline data and determine the level of service that currently exists on those streets and intersections. And then we analyze for the anticipated number of new trucks, new customers and single occupancy vehicles as well as the employees themselves and add that into the methodology for determine the level of service. So we went through and took a look at all of the intersections that would potentially be impacted. And we looked at Montague Road Main Street, Montague Road Deer Creek Way, Montague I-5 southbound on off ramps, I-5 northbound on off ramps on Montague Road I-5 and Montague Road and the unnamed private road, which is the project access. And so we did take a look at all of the surrounding areas that could be impacted by the project to understand that. So when we're doing the project site trip generation for Phase One, we estimate a total number of vehicles fueling position, which is under the ITE Code Section 945. The, we take into account the food hall square footage, which is ITE Code 930 and the retail square footage, which is ITE Code 851. And so we take those estimates and we generate that. We also did the trip generation for the Phase Two hotel rooms and it's based off of that. And the ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers publication. And so we use their 11th Edition Trip Generation Manual. But there's people way nerdier than I am determining these things. All right. You good, Mike?
Yes.
Go for it.
Right. Sorry about that, everyone.
Yeah.
Anyway. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, we're, you were just echoing for a second. We had both your audios on, but we just muted your computer audio. So you're just on the phone and we can hear you fine. Go for it.
Okay. Anyway, as as was, as Juliana said, there were, the traffic analysis did cover all the LOS requirements by the city. And the, the project did not surpass any of those. There was a signal analysis, which is done, which is done for intersections to determine if the intersection will be congested when the new traffic is added to the, the city roadways. Based on that analysis, there were impacts. Based on that analysis, there were impacts to the on and off ramps for the I five Montague Road intersection. And there are mitigations in the. E I R that requires mitigations for those impacts. Basically what it says that according to the traffic study, there would, there needs to be an always stop. Put on both the on, on ramp and off ramp of. Southbound and northbound ramps and that's according to. Their calculations from the traffic report, Caltrans has come back and said they would like a signal there. And part of the mitigation is we say that whatever, you know. We had asked to go through Caltrans approval as far as the improvements to that intersection would be. Caltrans, since they are both actually state roads, S R three and I five, obviously, they have the last say on what actually goes on those roads. Caltrans would like the city to set up some type of funding mechanisms to put. Stoplights on those roadways, however. They have not provided the information to say why or provide proof that those. Signals are actually required based on. Mention they apply or done, calculations they've done. And like I said, we have a traffic report that says always stop, in other words, four of these stop signs basically. Would be sufficient. This point with the, with the addition of the project. So in, in the long run, Caltrans or the project will have to go through Caltrans to get permission. To put stop signs on there if the Caltrans come back and says, no, we want a signal on there, then a. Either the applicant will have to pay for it and be reimbursed through city, through city funds. Or the city will have to set up some type of funding mechanism to put stop sign or signals on that. On those two intersections, however, as far as the E I R is concerned, the mitigations in the air are adequate. And therefore, no changes in those mitigations are required. Um, because we do address the Caltrans requirements as far as going through them in order to get the actual. Traffic control mechanism put in those intersections. So on that note. At this point, it's kind of up to Caltrans to either, once a, the project gets an entrosment permit to put. Either a stop sign or a signal there, they have to come back and tell the applicant what is required. And then at that point, a funding, either a funding mechanism or some other type of funding source will have to be provided. Uh, which the applicant will have to at least play his fair share into. And be set up by the city at that point. Uh, other than that, I, I think that's pretty much the, the major. Impact of this, other than bio and cultural, which are typical things, but the, as far as traffic concern, that is the major traffic impact. Far as the private road there. LOS is only actually, all levels of service is only required for public streets. Those are private streets there. Over the project applicant has access to those streets through their. Through their. C N Rs for the project site. That's about it, as far as I can tell you, as far as traffic is concerned.
Did you have any, I believe that addressed the comments that we heard, but did you, oh, the other one that I wanted to address was the. Definition of a sensitive land use for the purpose of sequoia analysis. So sense, noise sensitive land uses are generally considered to include those where noise exposure could. Result in health related risks to individuals as well as places where quiet is an essential element to their intended purpose. So we define noise sensitive land uses as residential dwellings as the primary concern. As well as hospitals, historic sites, cemeteries and certain recreation areas are considered sensitive to any type of noise level. Schools, churches will also be considered, but they are lower interior noise, noise levels. As opposed to like noise sensitive land use types. So that was the only other one that was mentioned during the comments, but if you have any other questions, we have Mike available as well as myself.
I have a question because you started talking about a grading system. And I think that we got interrupted and I'm curious as far, as far as, I think it was A through F. The typical grading system, where did that intersection come in at?
So the intersection of the private road in Montague. Oh, that was, that began at a. That began at a. Level of service B and was reduced to a level service of C. The city of Wairika's general plan for circulation element sets, it, it states that level of service shall be maintained at a C or higher. So it is within our general plan designation as well as still considered effective in terms of congestion. And just to put that into context, C means some delays resulting in fair progression and or long cycles. Individual cycle failures may begin to appear after, at lower ends of this level. The number of vehicles stopping may be significant, although may still pass through intersections and roads without stopping.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I, I am still a little concerned with the traffic, with the level of traffic that this new travel center is going to incur. Both for, I've been on that road and I don't know how it could accommodate the level of traffic that they're. Expecting without. Without delays, without there being problems with people coming from Holiday and Express. And the RV park. I would like to, I don't know if the study is adequate. But I don't know if that road, has that road been widened?
No, the, the road was installed and I, we do not have record of it ever being widened at any point. It's a private road, so it is not city maintained.
But if it produces a public nuisance or. A danger, don't you think that we should? Require that it is wider to, to handle all of the traffic that is there going to expect?
So based on the analysis that we conducted, we found that there would not be that situation that exists. So the perceived sense of danger is not the same as an analysis proving danger exists. And so I can let Mr. Martin or Mr. Jared jump in at this point. But again, the item on, in front of you today is if you don't feel that it's adequate, you may vote in that, that fashion. But I'll let Mr. Jared or Mr. Martin chime in on that.
Yes, if I could jump in here, Andrew Jared, City Attorney. As a stated, the analysis has been done. Has determined that there is not an undue impact or an impact that is not being mitigated. And what you heard tonight was testimony and it's up to you to decide if that testimony refuted. The analysis provided. But the testimony provided effectively was not quantitative in nature. It was qualitative in nature and made some general comments. But there was no comment, as you've heard from. Staff and consultants. The items identified by speakers have been discussed. In the, in the E I R and the studies. The. Issue relating to. Traffic, the transportation impact that's addressed in the traffic study and in the. The mitigation discussed at T R three, page three point eight dash seventeen. The issue relating to. The impacts on guests was addressed three point one seven dash fourteen. The private road impacts were addressed in the traffic study. So as Casey mentioned. The perception of an impact is really in lesser degree. Versus the evidence provided through the studies itself. So there is sufficient evidence to approve the. E I R, but the ultimate decision, of course, is the, or the planning commissions.
So on top of that, if you do feel that the study is not adequate, we ask that you state. Why you believe it's not adequate and then what additional analysis that we can do and then bring back to you. But at this point, as Mr. Jared has explained, we've gone through this with subject matter experts in that area. And we performed analysis and methodology that's accepted through Caltrans as well as Transportation Engineering Societies. And they, we've found that we do not have evidence to support that it would cause an issue.
Can we move to motion?
I think we can move to motion, yes.
Okay, I motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty three oh five, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Wairika. Recommending certification of the final environmental impact report. And mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the, for the proposed Wairika Travel Center and Hotel Development.
I will second that motion and I just want to reiterate that I do believe that the environmental impact report was thorough. Thank you. You have to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Imposed, motion here.
Great, thank you. So.
Okay, so next.
The next.
It would be very fast.
Okay, hey, we are on number seven, old business, which is none. Number eight, new business, planning commission meeting schedule. I believe we discussed changing the time from five thirty to six P M. And.
What time are regular city council meetings starting?
Six. Six thirty.
You'd be opposed to a six thirty start?
That's kind of late, but if that works for everyone else.
I get paid to be here, so don't ask me, I have to show up. I will say you will have a number of items coming up, you'll have this topic that we, we just discussed the environmental impact report for. That item could take some time to thoroughly go through and explain. And we do have the general plan coming up, so that could also be a longer item. So just putting that into perspective, I do my best to keep your meetings under two hours. But again, as we move through the general plan, it could go longer.
Six works better.
Six works better.
Yeah, and you will need to open this up for public comment.
Okay, do, do we have any comments on this? Six works, okay. Thank you, Tom Marie.
Does anyone online like to comment on the start time?
I do not show any commenting.
Okay.
So would you like to make a, a motion and a vote on that, just to make it formal, please?
I would like to make a motion that we change our start time to six P M.
I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, future planning items, we have items nine A and B. So these items we may see within the next ninety days.
So these will be scheduled for your September twentieth, twenty twenty three meeting beginning at six P M.
Okay. All right, if there's no other business, we can. Close.
Adjourn.
Adjourn, we can adjourn.
And you can use the gap.